Much. Next on the agenda is the approval of the regular agenda. I need a motion to approve as presented.
I have a question on the agenda, Mayor Carter.
Sure.
Okay, at this time, we told we have an emergency meeting. I have several questions here. Who in writing asked for the emergency meeting?
I did.
So you signed in writing for an emergency meeting?
Based on, yeah, based on the email that I believe you and Lauren sent out.
That, yes, we had a regular special meeting posted with a three-day notice. So the citizens of Grant could be here at 6:30 to attend. Now I see three of us said we can't probably make it at 6:30. You have a special emergency meeting. I want to know what constitutes the emergency that we're having an emergency meeting? Because you've been given adequate, in fact, I talked to, last month I asked to put on the agenda of the Charter Commission for discussion so we could discuss the timing, sending it in to the state auditor. You chose and voted against putting it on the agenda last month. So you had the opportunity to learn about it. Last week, I talked to our city attorney, called their office. I talked, Nick wasn't available. I talked to his secretary, asked him please call back so that I could express that you needed a 74-day notice. So you had well over a week to get back and call a meeting. It didn't have to be an emergency meeting. And I believe at this time that the city council meeting, a August agenda, in July, where the citizens can't participate, you see our citizens aren't very determined. We're available to get off at 3 o'clock here today, when we actually had one scheduled for 6:30. You know, I've not seen an excuse why you three members can't make it to a 6:30 meeting where the citizens, we had one properly.
Well, I think it's an excuse. I think, you know, I sent when I could come to the clerk, and you can't communicate. And I was told this was the time, this was the best, and that's what I did. The attorney had drafted something saying we need to get this done. We obviously need to get this done.
It does not constitute it, this is not an emergency. You've had plenty adequate time. I've notified the attorney's office, go back, he doesn't, this is not an emergency meeting. The only thing that should be on this agenda for an emergency meeting is the reason that this was called for. It should not have a regular city council meeting at this meeting.
Jeff, I'm in the attorney's.
The only question should be the ballot question, which would be pretty straightforward, which did not require an emergency meeting. Actually, if you read the documents.
You will not understand. City administrator could have done it.
Well, at that time, I will not participate.
I'm going to move to the floor.
At the emergency meeting, so I am leaving at this time. But just for the record, you were having an illegal emergency meeting, in my opinion. This will be probably brought by our city or our state attorney general's office for review. We'll probably direct our city auditor to go review your policies and procedures.
Thank you, Nick.
I will not participate. I've not been provided, I've been not provided in the agenda.
Nick, would you like, Nick, would you like to talk to me?
Yeah. Your passing of everybody's hand here, except for mine. I have nothing.
We'll just keep doing that. I don't really care. Is that what you call a hand? Okay, thanks. Nick, what do you want to say about that?
The emergency is, in fact, that this, that the election has to be set. There's, there's no question about that.
You should have done it ten days ago, Nick. You have proper time.
I have two.
A lot of aggression on your part. Your party have.
I don't order, thank you very much. See ya. Nope, Nick's talking.
The minutes are not correct.
Next, Nick's.
Second of all, this is a meeting. Third of all, it's working.
We'll just keep doing that.
You're not a dummy, because it's working. So next, I'm hoping you can continue. One sec, let me run through.
Thanks for coming. All right, Nick. Why, why are we doing this?
Because you're an idiot!
Okay, Nick, go ahead.
Is there a meeting anymore?
Yeah, we got three, three of us.
There's still a corner. So, based on the date that the charter was submitted, we have to hold the election within 90 days. 90 days puts us at a.
We have five minutes. I'll restrict your closing comments, please.
I gotta find where I was at.
You were discouraging Mr. Durin for a moment, sir.
No, I wasn't. I was repeating an email. If you let me continue, Mr. Rutter.
To find your way, please do.
If you'd stop interrupting.
Mr. Holderman has the floor.
Yes. Mr. Holderman has the floor. Excuse me, sir. I think you're hurting.
(laughing).
I do not at this point.
All right. Larry. Yeah. Sharon, as an officer of the court, holding a attorney's license and being a licensed CPA, I.
I actually probably am none of those.
Oh, well, good. Well, then, we got that out of the way. My, my concern is that you came up here and you told us you presented the Code of Ethics and Conduct, presented for signatures, which was based on a lie.
You know, can we set this date?
Uh, what?
Yeah, that's what we're really trying to do.
Let's finish this, and then we'll get to the date. This may, they may have an effect on your date. This may have an effect on the date that you set. All right, set a date, and then we'll go back, and then I'll come back to the conversation.
Your personal attack on Sharon is going to affect the.
So, and then the next issue, just as long as the discussion item is, our city has gone after a reporter for the suburban cable commission. They had charged him with felony or gross misdemeanor stalking. It was proven in the court and been adjudicated that it indeed was no probable cause to bring it to court. Our city attorney decided to do that. Centennial Court didn't. So at this time, I'd like to make a motion to City of Grant issue a formal apology to Mr. Chimbawski.
I would second that.
You gotta be kidding me.
Well, and I would say, uh, no. Because, because first of all, Mr. Duski did it. There's no, the only reason he got off is because Lauren signed an affidavit saying he was a reporter.
That's not what the.
He is a reporter! How many times do I have to tell you? Are you stupid or what?
No, I don't think I'm stupid.
Actually, Mayor Carter, the judge adjudicated and found no probable cause. And that's why, it only costs what, $40,000, $50,000? That's my point.
No, a pittance compared to what you've caused specifically.
Expert Lambers runs that meter pretty fast.
No, no, because what are they supposed to do? When somebody stalks and chases after a councilperson.
It wasn't stalking.
Do you know what stalking means?
They need to do something, and Tina.
Exactly. Well, at this point, I suggest Mr. Duski come back after the city, reclaim its cause, because the judge determined you had no probable cause, so don't be surprised. I'm just trying to help limit the city's liability.
I have the floor. I have the floor. Thank you very much. Let's talk about probable cause for a second. I talked about this last time this came up. When you get a ticket, say you're driving down the road, you get a ticket. Why does the police officer feel, obviously, it's probable cause that you're doing something wrong? Mr. Duski was issued a ticket by a sheriff's deputy. Did the sheriff's deputy have probable cause that Mr. Duski had done something wrong? Obviously. I believe in the integrity of our law enforcement officers, and the fact that they gave him a ticket for conduct at the site means that obviously there was probable cause.
So, no, there was no ticket issued at that site. Centennial Police, there was a clear, there was no ticket, no further dimension.
If I may, sir?
Well, you're mine.
If I may, sir? Mr. Duski was issued a citation.
No, he wasn't.
For this.
He was not offered a citation.
Well, I'm not going to insult all of your intelligences.
Because he didn't read the report. You just ramble on.
You don't get into.
There was no citation. That's, that's right, there was no citation issued at Hefner in Norfolk County. Read the police report. Oh, I'm not afraid. I'm saying you should, you, well, let's vote out, let's vote for the apology. Formal apology. I have a motion on the floor.
He's afraid of an apology.
I'm not afraid at all. I think I'm afraid of limiting his liability.
Tina, what do you want to say, real quick, and then we'll?
I want to, I just want to clarify this, since it all has to do with me. I haven't said anything about it. You two sent Duski to follow me for whatever your reason is.
Larry, you just got the floor.
Okay, so, I, I'm going to explain this as, as quickly as I can. You told me after the meeting, Larry, sorry, told me after the meeting that he would be sending people to my waterski show. That, it's a show.
She's got the floor.
It's a show. Get your shit straight.
Okay.
What do you know? I'm not talking to you.
Yeah, just learn, learn, learn to talk.
Anyway, you said that you were going to send people there to harass me for not coming to a 6 o'clock meeting instead of a 3 o'clock meeting. I'm not really quite sure why you specifically picked me. I can guess, what I know for a fact, that I believe it was the mayor that had to leave by 4:30 that day and couldn't be here at 6 also. Anyway, I got to the waterski show, I have to be there at 6 o'clock. It's at the top of the hill, when Mr. Duski approached me and showed up out of nowhere with somebody's cellphone in my face, screaming and yelling at me. We had probably 200 people there already for the show. He was running around, ran down the hill, chased me through equipment, through other people, through spectators, through the other girls on the team that were there trying to get their costumes out and get ready. He proceeded to scream and holler at me and put his phone in my face. I called the Centennial Lakes Police. They came, they looked for him and couldn't find him. They wrote the report. Then the Centennial officers contacted me and told me to contact Washington County Sheriff's Department, which I did. Washington County Sheriff's Department got the police report from Centennial, and then they made the charges. I didn't make the charges against Mr. Duski, although I agreed with it. That's what happened. It went to court. I don't know the, the exact details of how this all works and how it got there, but it did, because I suppose, because he was charged. And then I found out that the court case was dismissed because Mr. Cedarstrom signed an affidavit stating that Mr. Duski is a photographer for him.
Reporter.
It says photographer. And I guess that's the story, and I would like to know, this happened July 30th of last year. Why did you sign an affidavit in October of this last year if he was your reporter or photographer? What took you so long to sign an affidavit when it happened July 30th? You signed it October, I don't recall the exact date, 20-something. And so, so you did this, and it still proceeded through the court cases, the court costing money. You did this specifically to get him off the hook for committing stalking.
He didn't stalk. He's too stupid to understand it.
Do you want to see the video? Oh, that's why I'm sorry.
I played the video. You were there. You were there. Larry, we're both there. He's not there. We'll play the video. You said 200 people out there. I'll play the video. There's six people there at that.
You just lied. Just got the floor.
I did not lie. You can check all the.
There are no 200 people.
You're the liar.
Would you like to see the tape? Tina, I can show you the tape. It's the same one that the judge was.
Oh, he disappeared, because the officer asked for it, and Duski admitted it, because he went to Duski's house.
Yeah. It's your tip, it's your tip that you provided the court system.
Yeah, I'm giving Tina a little, a little air, but I think.
He admitted to doing it, the officer.
Yeah, he admitted to document that you weren't at a special meeting.
He's talking.
The officer asked for the device, his cellphone, whatever he used to video me or take pictures of me, and Duski stated that that cellphone did not belong to him, it belonged to somebody else. And he wouldn't tell who it belonged to. Mr. Duski would not tell who it belonged to. And I come to find out later that it's you, Lauren, and you, Larry, that actually drove him there and told him what to do. That's in the police report. You told him what to do. You sent him after them.
And let me, let me just, this, and we went through this.
We were hired by a staff that you attend. We didn't have a legitimate reason after being at a special meeting.
We went through this the last meeting, and we could get through the semantics and all, but I asked Lauren to apologize for it, and Lauren.
Absolutely not.
And Lauren, and I, and Lauren said no. So, that means you're both disgusting, that you would do anything like this to anybody. And a lady councilperson, you ought to be ashamed of yourself.
Yes.
You're on drugs again, Tom. I think you smoked too much dope.
Your, your, your manner and your, your constant screaming of Robert's Rules of Order while you stand up here and talk above everybody also is disgusting. So thank you for a very interesting evening. All right, now, I, I make a motion to adjourn.
I have a question.
Oh, well, we got, we got, you're right. We got a call question. So do we want to apologize to Mr. Duski? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any no's?
Embarrassingly no.
No. I make a motion to adjourn. I need a second.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, for adjourn. Thank you very much.
At least they all agreed on adjournment. Don't we go to the Grand Trail Riders and Woodland Nakers?
No, we don't do that anymore.
Well, it's in your files, in your procedures, if you read your rules and procedures. Is that in your face? In your face, you know it.
Oh, really?
Um, at the last meeting, people were talking about home foreclosures and whether they could get more information. And, um, there was a website that was noted, and I went to that website, but I was a bit disappointed because, um, I saw a lot of negative comments about board members and, um, and, and I just was not happy about it. There was, um, too much personal information that shouldn't have been there for, to be Village, you know, and everything. Um, and, you know, clearly, when you looked at this website, it looked clearly like, almost like a campaign of some sort instead of an information site. Um, and I basically just wanted to, um, you know, give a little reminder that, um, you know, the website, Village website's supposed to be for information only and not for campaigning or anything. And, um, you know, and I thought Mr. Sardo would know about that, and so I was just really pretty disappointed. Thank you.
Now, the next item, unfortunately, this is one, an item I really don't want to talk about, but I guess I don't have much choice. And I'm going to refer to, um, the recent January 19th date, uh, when I was getting ready to file petitions for people to run for offices. And I had my petitions all bound up in the, well, with binders like this, and I left my home. And just as I left home, trustee Heinz can attest to this, he gave me a couple of additional petitions that were not bound in my form yet. And I know this story might not seem like it's going anywhere, but it goes directly to a very important issue. So I took those loose papers and my bound papers, and I brought them here to Village Hall. And I needed someplace to take them apart. I didn't want to stand in the hallway and take them apart and have them go all over, because I'm not, I'm not the most delicate person. So I went into manager Anderson's office, and I said, "Manager Anderson, do you have a flat space where I can take my papers and unbind them and put the two new forms in and number them up?" And he said, "Sure, go over there to those cabinets over on the side and work there." Well, lo and behold, uh, I don't know how else to say this, but someone wrote an email or a blog and accused me of taking the binder clips from the manager's office and proceeded to make a long explanation about how that makes me a bad person and that I'm in, I'm thinking that I'm entitled to do things. And in no way, shape, or form did I take those binder clips. I already had them. And I started, and I thought, "I'll just forget this. This is so stupid that I'm not even going to respond to it." But then somebody called me and said, "You know, even if you did take those, it wouldn't be a big deal." And right then and there, I realized what was happening. Character assassination starts with little lies. And as those lies, and then another little lie, and then another, and then it's easy to believe a big lie about someone if you believe four, or five, or six little lies. So I have to address this. I cannot let it go. I feel, I am an honest person. I do not borrow Village equipment. I don't take Village equipment, and for someone to say that I did is pathetic. And if you have any doubts about my story, there was another person in the room, and I think they will agree that I had binder clips when I came in, and that was the end of the story. I didn't need any Village binder clips. Now, I know I'm going long and I sound excited, but I'm pretty proud of my character. I'm an honest person. All day long, I'm an honest person. And 60 years of honesty, I'm not going to let that be overcome by somebody who character assassinates me with lies. And that's a lie. I did not touch a Village binder clip, and for someone to say that I did, and that makes me entitled, and I feel like I can just do what I want, is pathetic. And this has nothing to do with the upcoming election or anything like that. This is me right now as a Village trustee, being accused of something so stupid as that. And that's enough. I said more than I wanted to say, but if you have any questions, there's somebody else sitting at this table who said a lie, and there's somebody else who witnessed the truth, and you can ask them how that could have happened. That's the end of my report.
And, and just to answer, uh, the woman who came forward to talk about the, the blog site, and, you know, for those that are not aware of it, it's, it's my personal blog site. It's not a Village blog site. It's my own. And that blog site is used for, uh, personal, uh, issues. Uh, I do talk about Village matters on there as well, but it also things that pertain to the Village. So there is some politics involved in some of those postings. But to say that that information is from the Village, it's not from the Village. It's, it's a personal blog site that I run personally. So, uh, and in answer to trustee Ritter, I stand by everything that's on that blog site, and I, uh, I put it out there because it is the truth, and I'm also 60 years old. And if, if trustee Ritter wants to, uh, you know, put his 60 years up against my 60 years of honesty, I'll, I'll match him day for day, year for year. So, uh, you know, I just, uh, I think that says all I need to say on that issue.
Next item, resolution determining trustee position vacant.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by trustee Ramirez-Lewinsky. Waiting for a second. Still waiting for a second.
You ought to know you're not going to get one. You already made your speech, and so we don't want to hear it again, to be real honest with you. You're not going to get a second.
I understand, trustee Segwalt.
Well, how long are you going to wait? I'm just asking questions. How long are you going to wait?
I'm, I'm still waiting for a second. Still waiting for a second.
Jesus.
Attorney Rose, is there any time limit on how long you have to wait before a motion dies for lack of a second? Or are we going to sit here till midnight?
No time limit. The board has the right to make a motion as it does in all other instances.
Is there any procedure, uh, that we can do to end this?
End the waiting, you mean?
Yes. Yes, end the waiting, and move on. I'm glad you think this is funny.
I don't think it's funny.
He's laughing, too.
It's ridiculous, is what it is. It's not funny, it's ridiculous.
Yeah, if, if the board determines that the time limit for making a motion is done, someone can make a motion to determine that there has been no second and move on to the next item.
I'll make that motion that there is been no second. Ample time has been given, and it dies for lack of a second.
No second.
Thank you.
Okay.
Say something.
No, because there was no second.
They just had a second, so no.
Well, they just.
Not a motion to move forward, not on the original motion.
We can discuss the motion to move forward.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll discuss the motion to move forward. I have to say, from all the emails I have received, from many, many residents, and phone calls I have received from many, many residents, that I am very disappointed in this board. That members of this board have attended many meetings talking about improving our image. And your lack of wanting to discuss this issue shows that you do not care about this community nor our image. As I have said, not only have I received emails and letters from residents in this community, I've received them from across the country. This is not setting a good example to our community. This is not setting a good example to any community. This is not what I want for our community. This is not why I ran for office. This is not the example I want to set for this community. And I'm ashamed of this board, because you're saying this is acceptable behavior in our community. And as President Sardo said, you are very much saying this is a sanctuary city for abuse.
You know, I would just add to that, and I, and I, and, you know, call the question? We're not calling the question. We're talking about this, uh, this matter here, because.
Call the question. He's got a right to call the question.
He's got a right to call the question, but I'm just saying that I also have a right to respond.
No, you don't have a right to do what's not legal. This has not been seconded, which shouldn't be any discussion.
What's not legal is what this board does every, every, every two weeks.
There was no discussion.
There was a second.
There was a second to can this thing.
And move on.
Not to do, not to back.
That may have been what your interpretation was of the second, but that's not what the second was.
Really? I did the seconding, and I seconded trustee Segwalt's motion to, uh, that.
To move on.
Die for lack of a second, so we were moving on. So that's what the second was. The second was not for.
And we're discussing, we're discussing the lack of a second.
We had discussion by trustee Ramirez-Lewinsky. We got our lecture. Now trustee Humphre, called the question. He has every right to call the question, and Robert's Rules of Order is when you call the question, there is no more discussion.
We're not operating under Robert's Rules of Order.
Oh, because it's convenient to you now.
No, because we have our own rules.
Wait, wait, wait. Trustee Sardo is, is correct. We don't operate under Robert's Rules, but our rules, but our rules.
President Sardo, thank you.
I'm sorry, President Sardo. But our, our rules do indicate that when you call the question, that issue's non-debatable.
Right.
So you do have to, under your rules, call the, call the, for the vote. The vote is to determine whether or not there's been sufficient debate on the issue of determining that there's been no second.
Thank you for the clarification, Attorney Rose. The question's been called. It's just more of the same stuff, when they don't want to hear what other people have to say.
No, no debate.
They shut off the debate. It's okay when they do it, and nobody else does.
We don't want debate in this town. Only when it, only when it suits certain people do we have debate in this town.
The question has been called.
Yeah. The question. The question has been called, all right. The question is, why are you people sitting on this board? That's the question.
The question has been called. We need to take the vote.
No, the question is, why are you people sitting on this board? Who do you represent in this community? That's the question. Who do you represent?
I guess we're sitting on here to make sure you don't ramrod everything you want.
Ramrod? Ramrod, absolutely. Trustee Ritter, you are.
Thank you, I hate to say this, thank you. I really hate to say this.
No, you won't hate to say it. You'll love saying it. Go ahead, say, insult me.
I really hate to say this because you should be a person, especially a schoolteacher.
Right, all right. Call my employment and your question now.
Who should be concerned about the standards of this community.
Bill, I've listened to your lectures all night. I've spent an hour tonight listening to you lecture us.
Unfortunately, nothing ever sinks into any of you people.
I think that we already are waiting for corral onto our actions that you requested from the state attorney.
Yeah, don't worry, they will happen, believe me. So whether you guys want to take care of this or somebody else is going to do it, we could clean our own house as we ought to do. But oh, no, not this town, not this, this board, not these people.
If there was a recall.
I hope the voters out there are watching. I hope the voters are out there watching this because they're going to see what kind of representation they have on this board.
And president Sardo.
It is disgusting.
President Sardo, the voters. President Sardo, President Sardo, the voters also.
I'll take the 96 to 6 vote every day of the week.
They also know of the double standard where your police report says you threatened to kill your wife. And this is misdemeanor now.
I was not charged with anything, trustee Sigwalt. I was not charged, I was not charged with anything.
The question's been called.
And don't you ever defame me in public. Unless you want to be, unless you want to talk to my attorney.
Oh, please, it's okay for you to defame us, though.
No, I'm not defending you.
The question has been called.
You guys are at the disgrace. All of you, from the convict at the end to the woman whose son had sex with the convict's wife. Unbelievable. What a town. What a beautiful place. Yeah, go sit down, folks. Terry, call the roll.
Please, thank you.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. No.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
They were just not calling the question.
I understand. We didn't handle the motion.
Yeah, there was a motion to end. So there's a vote on the motion to end.
Okay, Terry, call the roll again.
I'm sorry, on the motion to dying for lack of a second.
Call the roll again, please.
Yes.
Trustee Hines.
Yes.
Trustee Sigwalt.
Yes.
Trustee Ramirez-Lewinsky. No. Trustee Ritter.
Yes.
Trustee Teeter. Yes.
No, and you'll all live and die with that vote, believe me.
We're getting threatened. I'm glad it's on video.
No, it's on, it's on the record for the voters to decide. That's going to be before us later this evening. And that is, you know, the resolution determining the trustee position to be vacant. And I think it's important to bring this up because of the fact that, you know, a lot of, a lot of discussion's been made about this, talked about, you know, talked about and talked about and talked about. And people have tried to make it other than what it really is. I mean, the fact of the matter is, what we need to do, what we need to do is, as a board, come to agreement on what is right in our community. And this isn't based on any personality. It's not based on any past, you know, differences that anyone has had with anybody on this board. But it's based on what is correct, what is lawfully correct, what is legal. And our village attorney very, I think, judiciously put together a five-page memorandum that I hope everybody took the time to read because there was some very good information in here, I believe, concerning this matter. And, you know, when I was at this seminar in Palatine, there was 10 mayors there along with myself from Cook County. And all 10 of those mayors expressed their concern about what was going on in our village. And I want to tell you, even the secretary of state, Jesse White, had heard about this situation. Along with him was his assistant Jill Zwick, who had been a former state representative here in this community. And Jill came up to me after Secretary White had finished his remarks. And I've known Jill for a number of years. She said to me, she said, Bill, I don't understand what's going on in Carpenter'sville. It's like a bad soap opera. What is going on in that community? And I just want to let you all know that people, whether you want to believe this or not, are paying very close attention to what is going on in our community. And it's embarrassing, frankly. When I get out into the community and I talk to other people around this area, around the state of Illinois, I hear disparaging remarks more often than not about our community. They don't understand why we have these type of things occurring. They don't understand why a trustee would do the type of things that one of our trustees has been convicted of and thinks that he can remain on the board. They don't understand it. They just frankly do not understand it. And they express those concerns to me. They said quite frankly, how can anyone believe that they can commit a crime like that, be convicted of that crime, be charged and found guilty by a judge, and not step aside from that position? And you know what? I have the same concern. And here is, I think, very, a very pertinent part of the memorandum that attorney Rhodes put together. And it says, "When determining whether there is a vacancy in office due to the conviction of the office holder of an infamous crime, the test set forth by the Supreme Court is whether or not the act violated commonly accepted principles of honesty and decency." And I challenge anyone sitting in this room that lives in this town to tell me that we are now going to be known as the community that has a standard so low that we will allow a person who has been found guilty of a crime involving using a weapon against another individual to remain as a elected or a person in authority on our board. I find that incredible. I mean, and everyone I've spoken to that's an elected official has expressed the same type of outrage to me. There is a, there is right now a website that's doing an informal poll. And that poll right now indicates that 96 people who have logged on to this and voted, 96 people have voted that trustee Humphreys should be removed. Six people have said that he should stay. 96 to 6. 96 to 6. So I just want to let you know that that is the overriding opinion. I don't care what the signs say out here that people are holding up because these are all obviously people who are friends of trustee Humphreys. And this has nothing to do with friendship. This has nothing to do with political party affiliation. This has nothing to do with anything but one item. And that item is, what is this community going to stand for? What are our standards? Are we going to be a sanctuary community for people who abuse their spouses? Is that what we're going to stand for? Is that what Carpenter'sville is going to be known for? You know, there was a, there was a time not long ago when we were all asked, what do we want to see happen in this village? And the overriding opinion was, we need to improve our image. We need to improve our image. Now you tell me how supporting somebody who has been convicted, been charged, tried, convicted of domestic abuse, a domestic battery. And yes, it was a misdemeanor. But attorney Rhodes also researched that situation. And it clearly states that infamous crimes. And an infamous crime is what is important here because an infamous crime is what determines whether or not an office holder stays in office. And it's not limited to just felonies. It can also be a misdemeanor. He was not only charged with, he was convicted of four counts of domestic battery. That is a very serious charge and very serious conviction. He used a weapon in the commission of this crime. That is serious, folks. Very serious. I mean, would any of you, any of you sitting out here, any of you this evening, consider any of your loved ones who was treated in that manner to be unreasonable to request that that person, first of all, be punished for that act? And secondly, not hold a position of power in the community? That is ridiculous. On the face of it, it's absolutely ridiculous. And I would hope that this board, and I have faith in this board, you know, truthfully, we've had our differences. We don't always agree on things. But I have faith in this board that they, they do care about this community. They do care about our image. They do want us to move ahead. And until this cloud is removed from us, that cannot happen. And we need to move ahead. And this isn't about any personal vendetta, any personal individual or any differences I may have personally with anyone on this board. This is about what this community needs to do to do the right thing. That's what it's about. It's about doing the right thing. It's about making good judgments. It's about doing what's good for the community so that people can feel proud to live here in Carpenter'sville. And that's very important. It's important to me, and it should be important to all of us. And that concludes my report. Just in response to a couple of comments about, you know, how I used the gavel previously for some of the, some of the antics that have occurred in this room over the last nine months. All I can say is, you know, before people criticize, they should walk a mile in your shoes. I mean, first of all, this is, this is not a difficult, I mean, this is not an easy issue to maintain decorum on. There's a lot of emotion on both sides of this issue. And therefore, you know, it's up to me to try and maintain order in this room, you know, during the proceedings. And when public comments are taking place, you know, there's been several times when people have, you know, had extensive applause. There's been several times when people have made comments from the back and, you know, let the record show that people have been removed from both sides, you know, during these discussions. So it's not one-sided. It has been as evenly handled by myself as I possibly can do it. And this is an emotional issue. There's a lot of emotion. And I guess probably a judge, you know, if this was a courtroom or a court of law, you know, we have police officers here. I know people were talking about people having drinks in the back and, you know, and things that are not permitted in the boardroom. Well, you know, I can't see all around the boardroom. I do depend on our police officers to, you know, maintain some of the order in the room. I can't hear everything that's being said. And just as a judge in a courtroom depends on the police officers, you know, it is up to them also to assist me in making sure that there is decorum in this room. So I just want to remind people that this isn't solely up to me. This is something that needs to be addressed by both our police, myself, and, and those who are here. The audience needs to also, you know, be mindful of the situation that we are trying to conduct village business here. And this, you know, these outbursts and these things that cause disturbances should not be happening. I mean, these shouldn't happen on either side. So, you know, just let me remind everyone once again that, you know, we're trying to maintain order in this room. We're trying to move past this heated issue. That was the reason I had made my previous ruling at the last village board meeting that this item would no longer be an item for discussion. And I think that was the right decision to make. I stand by that decision, even though I was overruled here this evening. But the problem is that we need to do village business now. You know, we need to maintain a level of respect for one another. We need to understand that anybody coming up here to speak should be respectful of everybody on this board. And I just want to reiterate the fact that, you know, this gavel only goes so far. You know, I can gavel people, but if they're not paying attention to the gavel, it means nothing. So we need, you know, we need cooperation from the crowd. We need cooperation from the police who are here in the room to make sure that order is maintained. So that concludes my report.
Okay. However, at the meeting, the question was posed whether the attempted unseal trustee Humphreys was due at least in part to the illegal immigration ordinance which he co-sponsored.
You know, sir, once again, I mentioned this at the last meeting. And that is that this has nothing to do with illegal immigration. This has to do with a person who has been convicted of a crime. This has nothing to do with the illegal immigration issue. Paul Humphreys was found guilty of beating his wife. That's what this is about. This has nothing to do with illegal immigration. So if you want to make this about illegal immigration, that's your choice. But I'm just saying, it has nothing to do with that.
May I continue, sir?
You may continue.
Thank you. If I can remember where I was.
Well, you have it written down, so I'm sure you'll figure it out.
I wasn't keeping track with a pencil and the different words, sorry.
And President Sardo, I'm sure what you, the time you just took does not come to his time either.
I will allow him to continue. Okay.
However, the person handing out the signs and giving instructions is a well-known supporter of the illegal aliens. Also attending the meeting were two area real estate brokers who over the years have made a good living selling homes to the population targeted by the proposed ordinance. One of them took the opportunity to speak against trustee Humphreys at the meeting. Did I mention that the man handing out the signs is or was involved in the home mortgage industry? Is it possible that the loss of personal income is a driving force behind?
Yes, sir, I'm sorry, but you know, you're totally off point on this, on this issue. You're talking about illegal immigration. You're talking about mortgages. You're talking about Hispanics that are doing business in our community. I don't understand what, where you're going with this. Where are you going with it?
I was in the middle of explaining this point when you interrupted me, sir.
I'm just saying, what you're saying so far is totally off point. And it's not allowed.
If you keep interrupting me.
Because you're talking about something that is irrelevant to the, to the topic. You're deflecting the issue. You're talking about something that has nothing to do with this case.
Excuse me, President Sardo.
This is supposed to be a statement, not a debate, sir.
Excuse me, President Sardo. What this man is doing is he is giving his opinion on something the same way Mr. Kalizinski just got up and gave his opinion on the court proceedings.
I disagree. Because he was there at the court when he.
It doesn't matter. He said. It doesn't matter. He said she said.
What does this man have to offer to this subject?
I thought we're not supposed to debate.
Well, what I'm saying is it also is supposed to be relevant to our... It's supposed to be relevant to our village business. This is not relevant to village business.
It is relevant. He's talking about the removal of trustee Humphre.
No, he's not. He's talking about immigration. This has nothing to do with removal of trustee Humphre.
Well, Mike, if he ever got to finish it, Bill, you interrupt him every five sentences.
Trustee Ritter, have you heard what this man is saying?
I'm trying to. You've interrupted him so many times I lost track of what he's saying.
Well, I am sorry, but you know, I am not going to put up with people who are up here to make this into something it isn't. That is ridiculous. And we're not going to lower ourselves, hopefully, to that type of base, type of rhetoric that these people are going to use to try to deflect the real issue in this case. Now, if you have something worthwhile to offer, please offer it now. And if not, then please sit down.
Would you like me to submit this in writing before we say it, so you can edit it?
No, I don't want to edit it. I just want you to understand that this is not about illegal immigration. We have made a point in this village that we are not talking about illegal immigration because this board has tabled that subject. We're not talking about illegal immigration, okay? If you have anything else to say that's relevant, go ahead.
I guess that'll be judged when you judge it, if it's relevant or not.
Well, does it have to do with illegal immigrants?
What it had to do was the person handing out the signs and the persons that were speaking.
And you know they were illegal immigrants? Well, I'm just saying, what is this man talking about? I don't get it.
Let him finish, so we know.
Well, I have no idea what he's talking about.
Isn't the rules of decorum supposed to be not debated? Is that not the rules of decorum? So they're to make their statement whether we...
And they're also supposed to be within the confines of village business. I have not heard one thing coming out of this man's mouth that has anything to do with village business.
He was making a comment pertaining to our village board meeting, the last meeting. So that is village business if it was at the last board meeting. He's trying to understand what was going on and why it was allowed. I believe that that's where he's going.
Well, I don't believe that's where he's going at all. I think where he's going is into an area that we have already said we're not going to go into.
I think we're prolonging the agony by keeping, interrupting him and never getting to the...
Finish your statement. Finish your statement.
Okay. Is the possible loss of personal income the driving force behind the movement to unseat a good trustee? Today, as I read the agenda for tonight's meeting on the village website, there, under new business, enlisted as item six, slipped in between the purchase of a Ford F-250 truck in agreement with the SEC group incorporated for engineering services, was resolution determining trustee position vacant. How casual is that? Let's buy a truck? Let's have some engineering done? Oh, and by the way, let's not forget to kick a good man while he's down. At the last meeting, we heard the phrase, "Infamous crimes bandied about quite often." In my mind, if this board removes trustee Humphre or even attempts to remove him, that would be the true infamous crime here. A crime committed against trustee Humphre, as well as the people of Carpenter'sville. He has served so well these past years. In closing, it is very fitting that today's meeting is being held on April 1st, April Fool's Day. If the board commits this infamous crime of removing trustee Humphre, the trustees who vote for the removal will be the fools, but the joke will be on the citizens of Carpenter'sville, who will be cheated out of one of their hardest-working representatives that they have. I'm very proud to consider Paul Humphre my friend and to offer these few words in his support. Thank you for the opportunity to speak my mind. And God bless you, United States of America.
Members of the board, in the last meeting, the president stated that there would be no more discussion about the ordinance that we had been discussing. It's obvious that the president does not like the resident's input regarding illegal aliens during the public comment portion of the agenda. It's also evident that his interpretation of what's relevant may not concur with ours, as concerned speakers, given his own biases. This is not about the ordinance.
But it is about the subject that we have deemed... The problem is, let me just say this, and this isn't a debate. The problem is that we do not have four members on this current board that's willing to discuss the illegal immigration issue. So therefore, it's not my decision. It's the board's decision that we do not further discuss this. So, you know, to categorize this as it being my decision, it was not my decision. It was the decision of the board by not having the willingness to second emotion on three different occasions to actually discuss this issue. So therefore, the issue itself is out of bounds, and we cannot talk about it. We can't really talk about the decision that was made because that is the decision. So that's out of bounds also.
Well, Mr. President, I think the public comment ordinance clearly says there shall be no debate in matters raised during the public comment. And also, this is our comments of burdens that we bear, not burdens that the board wants us to bring forth. We're bringing to you issues that we are concerned about, not things that you want us to bring. And this is merely repression of dissent, as I've stated in the past.
But as I said, this is a matter that has not risen to the level of village business. Therefore, it is not allowed. It's under our rules that we have adopted. That is our rules.
Mr. President, not everything that comes before you is already village business. It can become that, but it has not yet.
The problem is, Bob, we've talked about this for nine months. We've decided that this board, this current board, does not want to discuss this at this current time. It doesn't mean that some time in the future, this won't be fair game again. But right now, until this board decides to do that, it's not fair game. So I cannot allow you to continue.
I appeal the rule of the president.
Yes, thank you very much.
A second vote.
Okay, Terry, would you call the roll?
Trustee Humphre.
Sorry, I didn't hear what the...
He's appealing the role of the president.
And a yes vote would be to allow Mr. Spalazo to continue, correct, Attorney Rhodes? Yes.
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 No.
Yes.
Yes.
No. Let me just remind the board before we continue here. You know, we have adopted rules. And what you just did was... No, you didn't follow the rules because we agreed that things that did not fall under village business would not be allowed to be discussed. So if you're going to change the rules, you know, then that's another discussion. But the point is, the rules that we have adopted, I'm enforcing. You know, whether you guys want to, you know, overrule my opinion, you know, what you're really overruling is the rules that you guys approved. We all approve these rules that we're going by. And if you say it's okay for people to talk about a subject that both our village attorney and myself agreed was not village business, even though, you know, we have made rules that we can only talk about things that are village business. So if he's allowed to speak about this, then I would expect the board to be willing to talk about it itself. Are you guys willing to talk about this?
Not in the format that it was currently presented.
Pardon?
Not in the format that it was currently presented.
Well, then, it's out of bounds. Because that is, this is an item that we have deemed to be not village business.
I think the vote was taken, and I'm sorry, Bill, you lost. So you can just stop arguing, because we've already voted to let the man speak.
Okay, so have we, what I want to know then, have we overturned our rules that we adopted?
That would be something you could make during trustee reports. This is not a debate.
I'm just saying, we have rules, Ed. We have rules. And if we're not going to abide by our own rules, then what are we doing here? Then what's the purpose of us holding meetings if we're not going to abide by the rules that we, as a board, have set?
May I continue?
So how long has that now been taking place?
Please restart the clock to find...
Yes, would you restart the clock for Mr. Spalazo?
Hi, you, yes.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Can I be excused?
Yes, you can.
Thank you.
Okay. Whenever you're ready.
And actually, I'm going to be excused, too. I'm going to be in the back.
Am I allowed to continue?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate your...
Excuse me, you're out of...
Do I get a chance to talk now, or are you going to shout and interrupt me again?
I will let you talk.
The point is not what information was requested. It is how it was requested. President Sardo, you are one member of the board. Only the board as a group can direct the manager or the police chief or any other official. You don't have the right or the power, just because you're the president, to order staff to do anything. You don't have the right to tell the police chief to give you a report or to pursue a matter of legal... You feel that it should be pursued, so you tell the police chief he needs to pursue it. That's not appropriate. The board can direct him, not the president. And when we call for point of order, that means that we object to what you're doing because you don't have the power to do it. So if we call point of order, you have to be quiet and listen. You can't just shout through the trustees. You do not have the power by ordinance to direct department heads, including the chiefs. And when trustee Humphre asks for a point of order, he's saying, "I want a ruling from the board about your power." And you can't just argue with him. You have to listen, because it's a board decision, not a president decision. Now, I don't know how much plainer that can be, President Sardo, but you do not have the right to do some of the things you do.
Okay, let me read, trustee Ritter. Let me read. Let me, excuse me, let me read. I want to respond to what he said because I want people to understand what I asked for. I says, "During the past several months, there has been much talk and speculation concerning the impact illegal immigration is having on our village. I have seen no statistics to prove to me that illegal immigration is a problem in Carpenter'sville. If we do have a problem with illegal immigrants in Carpenter'sville, we must be able to identify this problem."
I would like to appeal the ruling of the president.
Excuse me, I'm reading a statement.
I would like to appeal the ruling of the president. Attorney Rhodes?
Excuse me, I'm going to finish this.
Attorney Rhodes, I have appealed the ruling of the president. I have the right. Thank you, attorney. Yes, you may.
Perhaps, maybe it would be best if I gave some information regarding points of order and regarding how they work. A point of order is a request by a trustee for an indication that the village president is not following the rules of the corporate procedures of the board. So that, when in fact there is an issue as to whether or not the village president has ruled correctly or is addressing someone correctly, that's a proper point of order. The item which is currently being discussed, believe it or not, is the manager's report. It's the opportunity for the manager to provide information to the board. So that, in my opinion anyway, if the issue was one as to whether or not this board has gotten far afield of the...
As far as coming up and assuming I am in cahoots with one of our code enforcers, because he lives on our block, my block, is so out of hand, ludicrous, and low. Now, my next-door neighbor is a police detective on our department. Three doors down from me is a fireperson on our department. Across the street is a public works department person now. And we have many more people in that subdivision that work for this village. So I suppose I was in cahoots and responsible for getting all these people their jobs. Now, I know where you're getting your information from. And it stems, lady and gentleman, off of President Sardo's blog site. And he has control over it. He reviews and he releases all this misinformation and all these lies. President, Manager Anderson, may I ask a question of a staff member again, please?
Yes.
And Cindy McCamick, Ms. McCamick, I have a question, and I do apologize for this. This is becoming regular at the board meetings because someone can't be put in their place. Did I have anything to do with hiring this individual?
No, excuse me, no, you did not.
Thank you, and I apologize for that. And you know, it's really funny, because it just so happens, you know, I guess my sixth sense just really works well for me. I regularly look at Iggy Bots's blog, and I look at the CAN site because it is full of gross misinformation, lies, and terrible, terrible comments on becoming a president sitting in that seat. I will read you. This was posted...
Trustee Sigwell, that's not my site.
No, no, you told me this is my turn, and I have the floor.
I'm just saying, that's not my site.
Well, Improving Carpenter'sville Part II: Get to Know About Carpenter'sville. That's your site.
You said CAN site.
Well, I said I, please don't interrupt me. I said I view both those sites.
I'm just correcting you.
You can look at the DVD. On August 2nd, 2008, at 11:59 PM, Mr. David Reese, who we all know is tied at the hip with Sardo, "Code enforcement has been a problem in the village for a very long time," he writes. "It is almost as if these code enforcement officers do not have the proper training. And I know a few of the most recent additions to community development staff could be considered political hires because of these connections to trustee Judy Sigwell. So that could be a problem. Consistency and fairness is a huge problem." Keep getting your information from this yahoo. He doesn't even know what he's talking about. Then he goes on. "Trustee Kay Teeter, who also is a member of the improvement committee, has multiple violations on her home that are not being enforced. I personally spoke with Director of Community Development Cindy McCamick on the subject about three years ago, and I was informed that Teeter had a file an inch and a half thick. The fact that she even had a file and nothing was being done about it is enough to make anyone suspicious." Director McCamick, again, and I do apologize. Did you have this conversation with Mr. Reese, and did you tell him this information? Okay?
Can we get her on the mic on that one?
What about the file?
I don't remember.
Can you produce the file?
For...
Ms. Teeter's inch-and-a-half-thick file. Can you produce that?
I believe that there is a crack in the file in our offices for 990 Berkeley.
And is it an inch-and-a-half thick?
I do not know.
I think Ms. Teeter should be seeing that and is aware of that. And I would like to see it also if trustee Teeter gives me permission. Now, going on. August 5th, at 1:06 AM in the morning. These people have no lives. Mr. Reese says, "I think it's funny that you try to compare a gazebo in a park that is owned by the village of Carpenter'sville and was damaged in a storm to the numerous code violations trustee Kay Teeter has on her home. And many of the violations go back several years, as if to justify Teeter's laziness in some twisted way. Boy, that is weak." You know, President Sardo... You know, President Sardo, you allow this garbage on your website. You do not investigate to see if it is true. You just allow your little minions to go out there and say and do what they want, not only attacking staff each board meeting, but attacking us also. Now, I just want it clear that this man is allowing this. Remember that in the next election. And... I do believe that that is all. And ladies and gentlemen, I will keep everyone up to date. I'll make copies out of my own pocket. Every time this man comes forward with his lies, getting them off of his website, the president's, and spewing them, and we wonder why Carpenter'sville has the image it has, the man in the head seat is allowing it. Next is Richard Schwartz. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Before you start the clock, could you stop for a second? It's real discouraging to come up here and see all the heads down. It's like...
Sir, you're on a two-minute timer here, so let's go.
I'm not following you.
You're on a two-minute timer.
Could you start it over, please?
No, we're not going to. Just go ahead.
So it was unreasonable for you to ask that people look up and give me their attention?
Sir, you have two minutes. We're all looking at you. You have two minutes. Now you have a minute and 30 seconds.
Okay, well, I guess I won't be able to say it. Last week, you limited... This kind of goes to the heart of what I was gonna talk about, which was the state of our democracy. Last week, you limited speakers because of the number of speakers to one minute each, but you allowed Pamela Giappal to speak as long as she wanted to. It was four or five minutes. And it reminded me of George Orwell's famous saying from Animal Farm about how all animals are equal, but some animals are more equal than others. And that's how I feel like I'm being treated now, just because I was kind of asking for your attention. Like, I noticed you all were very attentive to Ms. Giappal the other... last week. And I just wanted to ask for your attention before I started. And I immediately got a hostile response back from you. I don't understand that. So you don't ever respond to citizens or what's...
I do, sir, but you have two minutes for public comment to the agenda items.
Well, it's all on tape, and I think it's a pretty sad commentary that you think that asking for you guys to look up off of your computers and give attention during a short period of time was an unreasonable thing. I really feel bad about that.
Thank you.
My name is Jeff Woods, 359 First Street. I have a couple questions. I'd like to know why at 32 Heckman Street, nothing's being done still, number one. Number two, I asked the mayor personally questions about the building, about who owns it, how to buy it, and he explained to me that he had nothing to do with it. He made me a deal back in February that he was gonna fix it up, get it cleaned out. And here to find out, he's in cahoots with the guy that bought the house, Eric Einhold's. But it's not funny, it's the truth. I never heard of a mayor going into a house and cleaning the house out for a person unless you're in cahoots with them.
I was laughing at you, though.
Now, Tom, talk it to the mayor. He thinks you're funny.
What I would do is, mayor, mayor, what I would do...
Number two is, what mayor of a town do you know goes into a house, an abandoned house, pulls out a couch that is fested with bedbugs, pulls it out on the front porch? I witnessed it. Not somebody told me. I saw it. And also saw him in there cleaning the stove and had the town come and make four cleanups for this guy. But he knows nothing about it. He says...
This is for the property on the 32 Heckman Street?
Absolutely. And it's still... Now, the guy has a sign in the building that says, "Eric Buys Houses." Now, when I spoke to him before, he told me he was a scumbag and he was this and that. He told me he was never gonna allow this guy to ever buy any properties in Phillipsburg. Now he's in cahoots with him. But there ain't no way a mayor is gonna go in a building and clean it out and pull out fested bedbug couches for nothing. So, I mean, you know, it's about time, seriously, that something gets done with this guy. He just full bore out of control, okay? I was at a meeting six weeks ago. I come to the meetings every week. I sat in the front row right directly in front of him. A guy come up here and talked all kind of nonsense about what a great guy he is and what he does for the town, okay? And he looks at me dead in face and he goes like this here to me. Almost like, you know, he's threatening me about something. He's a bully and, you know, he just... He's out of control with everything. It's about time somebody does something to him where he gets what he deserves.
Mr. Woods, did you... I would encourage you to reach out to the mayor's office between the hours of 8:30 and 4:00.
I got nothing to say to him. He used to be my best friend with my father and me. I helped get him elected. I went over his house, hung 50 signs out for him. Now he has the audacity to go around telling people that he just let me come over if he didn't want me to help him do things. I have nothing to say to him. He come to my father's funeral, never even acknowledged me or said a word to me. I got nothing to say to that guy. I don't sit there and make faces.
Mr., thank you.
I got nothing else to say.
Thank you. 32 Heckman, real quick, I wanna share the backstory, you know? And here's what really happened. I was coming home late from a meeting one night, and I got a call from former council president Todd Tressigny. There's someone in the audience that was there that night. Mr. Moore was there, Mrs. Moore was there. And once I got a look at the house, I was appalled. I was appalled at it, and I did have a few choice words for the landlord because I called the landlord and asked him about it, and he told... He instructed or informed me that he wanted to leave it the way it was. I continued to contact that landlord to get access to the building, and he finally gave me access to the building. And I cleaned that building by myself. I took my own mops, my own mop buckets. I went in and mopped floors, took out garbage, took out the couch that was wrapped. I cleaned the stove for the Moores, not for me. And not for the landlord who... To accuse me of some kind of collusion with the landlord is insanity. And I'm gonna take that very serious, take it to the prosecutor's office, and I'm taking it to my attorney. You can't accuse a mayor of wrongdoing.
Mayor, mayor.
Here we go again.
Here we go again.
Guys, listen.
I'm just getting myself...
All right, listen. This is a council meeting.
By the prosecutor's law, you...
Wait, I'm gonna have to ask... I'm gonna have to ask you to leave people to my headroom first, okay? I did it to Joe last weekend. I have to ask you to stay.
Okay, I'll refrain from the rest of that council present. I just want everyone to know that I understand that responsibility to have a construction... a constructive dialogue with residents. But again, like any of you accused of collusion or anything else, I'm gonna stand up for myself, just so you know. Okay, I'm tired of this.
Mayor, with all due respect, just so you're aware, I was accused of taking money out of the back of a landmark armory.
I heard, council president.
I didn't attack anybody.
Yeah. Well, no.
No.
No, there's no need for applause here. This isn't a good thing. Like Councilman Woods said, we're supposed to be here working for the greater good of the town, and this high school back-and-forth stuff definitely has to end. I know we tried, and we tried again, and we gotta try again. And I'll never give up on moving the town forward, even if I lose a finger in doing so. I do believe that that is the gist of my report. I'm sorry it took so long, but I wanted to answer the questions of the council and the residents the best I possibly could. Thank you.
Calling this Board of Health meeting to order. Today is the 9th of November, 2012, it's a Friday. It is now 11 o'clock in the morning. My name is Tom Constantine. I'm the chairman of the Board of Health of Hanson. Seated here to my left is Mr. Richard Edgill, a member of the board. And to my right is Mr. Terrence McSweeney. To my far right is Mr. Matthew Tanis, the health agent who is gonna be taking the minutes of this meeting. At the outset, I would like to tell everybody that's in attendance at this meeting that this is a meeting of the Board of Health. This is not a hearing. It's a meeting. Any discussion regarding this matter will be confined to the members of the Board of Health. That being the case, the agenda for the meeting is to discuss and vote legal action against the town administrator. And that would be of the town of Hanson, that would be currently the town administrator is the Mr. Renee Reed. I will make a motion that the Hanson Board of Health vote to proceed to confer with legal assistance, i.e. an attorney, to discuss the possibility of some sort of legal action to prevent and preclude the town administrator. In this instance case, it's Mr. Renee Reed, but in the future, it can be any town administrator from interfering in with the operation of governments, the governance of the Board of Health as outlined in Chapter 111, Section 27 of the Mass General Law. Do I hear a second?
Is that a motion?
Ladies and gentlemen.
I second.
Discussion? What are we attempting to accomplish here? To restrain the town administrator from interfering with the Board of Health, define interference. I guess what I'm asking is, what are we trying to resolve here? Why are we talking about hiring an attorney at hundreds of dollars an hour? We're not... What are we trying to accomplish? What's our goal here? The goal is to have the town administrator cease and desist from its interference.
Define interference? What are we trying... What are we trying to do?
I have... I have in my possession, and it's in the possession of the Board of Health, meetings of minutes going back three years for this matter. It started with Mr. Finglass and you, when you were the chairman.
Yeah.
Where Finglass was insinuating himself into the issues of the Board of Health. It went from Finglass after he left. You had issues with Mr. Reed regarding the farm health agent, insinuating himself into the actions of the Board of Health.
And we always... This board, when I say "we," this board always managed to overcome those obstacles.
We most certainly did.
I guess what I'm asking is, why are we sitting here today having this discussion? What precisely precipitated this discussion? That's my question. There had always been a blurring of the lines of responsibility with respect to the health agent. And we've always managed to work through those issues in the past without involving attorneys, without involving public hearings, and without figure planning. I guess I'm asking, why are we sitting here today having this discussion?
Well, from... In the past six months, it's gone from bad to worse. The town administrator has absolutely no business, none, zero, of interfering in with the business of the Board of Health. And in the last instance, it began with the hiring of a new health agent. Mr. Reed initially stated that he was gonna be solely responsible to do that, and we countered, no, under Mass General Law, that's our responsibility. The only thing that the town administrator does is cut the checks to the employees of the Board of Health. That's it. Now, in the case of Mrs. Tramontana, who's our administrative assistant, she's a contractual employee and she falls into a very, very big area because she's contractual. She's a contractual employee with a union agreement. She's covered by a union agreement. Other than that, every other employee of the Town... of the Board of Health comes under the control and governance of the Board of Health.
And I share that perspective with you. I guess what I'm saying is, we have always managed to work through those issues. To my knowledge, if you'll let me, we've always managed to work through those issues without turning it into this kind of a formal setting and this kind of a formal situation. I guess I'm a little perplexed as to why this is all exploding right now. Well... Just based on my own operational history. And you're correct, I was the chairman for a number of years. And again, it was a blurring of the lines of responsibility. I think that's a natural consequence of the town administrator. And the fact that everybody's in this building, and that's been the situation for years. But we always managed to work through it. I guess I'm a little confused as to why your motion was to involve attorneys to generate opinions and maybe initiate some kind of legal action. I just don't see that we're doing the taxpayers of this town any favor by running up legal bills in this regard. Unless you can show me, you know, a clear demarcation between where things were when I was the chairman and where things are right now, I'm afraid I just can't agree with this.
The... I have had conversations with Mr. Reed in the past. As to my opinion, after reading Chapter 111, Section 27 of the Mass General Law and the Town Administrator Act where they conflict, and I said, "This matter is only in the get. This causes nothing but constant wrangling. And to get things ironed out, if we get a judicial opinion, everybody knows where they stand. It's in black and white. This is your responsibility. This is your responsibility."
At what... That's it.
"At what cost?" Well, you know, if I have to pay a life price out of my own pocket, I'll do it.
We've heard from one member.
Yes, sir.
And Mr. McSweeney keeps on talking about the cost of this. We have access to the Stafford County Association of Health Force. Show us the power. Reason for this meeting this morning, I would say, would be because we're notifying everybody that's the action we're taking. That's where we're going. We're gonna... We already have a poster. We're speaking to Cheryl tomorrow.
So you already made the decision before we even had this meeting, is that what I'm saying?
Excuse me.
That's what it sounds like to me.
From the chair, I mean, unless you wanna talk to me directly.
I'm asking you. The statement you just made sounded like you guys made the decision. We sat down here.
Mr. McSweeney, we have a post meeting.
Continue, you can reply.
We got a post meeting. It's required by the law.
That's a portion of the requirement of the law, isn't it?
Yes, it is. All right, so, Mr. Chairman, I move the vote.
I would like to say a few other things before we move to vote. The straw that broke the camel's back, as you had asked, was the fact that during our current issue with Hurricane Sandy, our health agent unbeknownst to the Board of Health was directed to remain at his residence rather than the seat of the town, which is the point of place of duty. Now, how and why that occurred is still unknown to me because Mr. Tanis is an employee of the Board of Health. He's not an employee of the town administrator. He's not an employee of the fire chief. He's an entire... He's an employee of the Board of Health. Yet, he was not here in the community where he was... Yet, he was not here in the community where he was supposed to be on company time. He was at his home. And no, no, as far as I know, none of the boards of members, none of the, the members of the Board of Health had any knowledge of that. And, and I'm, I'm still wading through that. And, and on top of that, after asking people how this happened, I've, I've, I've received conflicting testimony or conflicting documented evidence from several different people. So we're gonna have to sit through that until they. But that being said, we will move the vote. All in favor, all in favor of the motion?
You have to recognize people. You have to recognize people. You can't just take a vote. You're in discussion right now.
Mr. Chairman. Aye.
You're in discussion right now and you have people with hands up.
You'll have to be recognized by the chairman, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye. All right.
Come on, come on, Maggot.
Yeah.
What's the matter with you?
Please try again. Please take a shot and ride on. I will. You'll be done. Believe me.
Come on, please.
My family, Maggot, and you're in trouble.
And you two need to figure out where it's coming from.
Yeah. It's you two. It's him. Believe me, I will get you if you fuck with my family.
Can't, uh, you may write to me.
Yeah.
What?
You're alive.
Come on.
And we begin with the latest developments in the financially troubled Coventry Fire District. With not enough cash to make payroll, the firefighters there haven't seen checks since August. There's now a series of meetings aimed at sorting out a list of problems. And there was one set for this afternoon, but as I witnessed through the report, Steph Machado tells us, things went downhill quickly. So Jared, that's not from the West Bay Mobile Newsroom, Steph.
Well, Jared, tonight we've learned one private ambulance company has declined to provide services for this district if needed. The announcement comes after a heated board meeting this afternoon.
Yeah, we'll join the circus, Mom.
Insults rang out as firefighters and their supporters argued with members of the Coventry Fire District's board.
If you disrupt the meeting, I will call the police.
That's Frank Palin, the board's chair.
The disruption was ridiculous.
The board was meeting to interview candidates for an open board seat in executive session. Fire union president David Gorman tried to stop it.
Why would you interview an elected official behind closed doors? Makes no sense.
Open meetings law allows you to have interviews in public or in executive session.
The meeting never happened, but Monday's meeting will. A judge ordered it to at the Kent County Courthouse. On the agenda, possibly laying off all the firefighters who haven't been paid since August. It's why former division chief Andrew Para retired this week.
I had to retire because if I didn't, I wouldn't be able to collect my pension. I have to be an active member of a fire district or a fire department to be able to collect it.
Monday's agenda also includes a discussion of hiring a private ambulance service to cover this district. But Sunday night, Coastline EMS said they're not interested, the CEO, in a statement saying, as a result of deciding to help the residents of Coventry, we have gotten threats of harm to our personnel and equipment by the union and its members.
You're hiding from 100% on the second section.
Frank Palin says despite a lack of support from firefighters, he won't resign.
I'm here for the taxpayers.
And I spoke with David Gorman, the firefighters' union president, tonight. He says he saw that statement from Coastline, but is not aware of any threats made by the union. Now, as for that courthouse meeting tomorrow, Palin says he hopes police there will stop any outbursts. We're live in Coventry tonight with the West Bay Mobile Newsroom. Steph Machado, Eyewitness News.
And we're working on an update today on the embattled Coventry Fire District. A house for a hearing at the Superior Court this morning. The meeting is in executive session right now. On the agenda, the discussion of layoffs and the hiring of a private ambulance service. The firefighters of the Coventry Fire District are not getting paid to work because of the district's financial trouble. We have a crew at the courthouse working the developments and will of course bring you more details later today on Eyewitness News.
What began at a township garage in Glenroy ended here at the community building in Colton. And although it meant packing up a fiery township meeting and moving it to Colton for impromptu negotiations, it all ended well as a resolution to the hot topic of fire protection for Col Township was ultimately reached.
We're glad you all came out tonight because we have been able to reach an agreement with Col Township. We have a gentleman's agreement that they will sign a contract with Colton.
The contract, it's for three years. It's going to cost the township around $10,000 annually. As part of a compromise, the 10% increase Colton was seeking was instead reduced to 3.5%. Once the two sides made it to the bargaining table, it only took around a half an hour to hammer out a deal. Actually, getting to the table was the hard part.
She, and the committee was standing right there and they said they are more than willing to work on it. All three of them said they are more than willing to work on it. So what you guys need to know is Grand Gator cop the county tip, people get this straight now. That's what she just said. All of us come down there, she's willing to talk to us. But you guys have to come down, make an effort.
That's because the successful talks were preceded by a township meeting in which forty residents showed up and spoke out against an option to go with Wellston instead of Colton as the primary fire protection provider.
Our insurance is going to go left because Wellston's guy comes seven miles from my house where I live a mile. Minor trip, alright, Chuck. But don't, don't be out of the job and less if you pull something like this.
Some said their insurance rates would skyrocket, others worried about response times and tempers flare.
I don't care what you got, lady. It makes no difference to me. You have no idea what's going on here. Vote him out. You'll go get more.
I'm coming after you and you and you and you, whoever's in the home here. This is, and you know it.
Been in the township my whole life.
Yeah, tell everybody, Lord, you don't leave me the township no more. Cause you hate.
Hey. Ow.
You just blew out those one house.
The dogs are, ow.
This is, this is the kind of people that you have in the middle of the conversation.
Yeah.
Some residents said they were willing to pay extra taxes just to keep Colton as their fire protection provider. May actually come to that. Col Township trustee President Pete Linton said a one mil fire protection levy could appear on the ballot as soon as next year. This has been Brad S. Sherman reporting for The Telegram. All right, next is Crown Watch. Okay. Use of city dumpsters. Anybody want to comment?
Don't use. But I will say that if the dumpster, the city's paying. And I would rather see that man right there drive down the street and throw his sack of trash in that dumpster than I would go out here and throw it over 46.
Thank you, Bill. I hear you.
I would rather see that.
That's absolute truth.
I know, the dumpster belongs to a private business or a trash can belongs to a home. But still, it's trash, and trash is trash. I don't agree with the fact that what took place, took place. I don't agree with that. That stuff shouldn't have been hauled to the fault brothers or Cumberland or something like that. But it did. It shouldn't have happened. It shouldn't have happened.
Yeah, well, that was just their old prime town, let's start some stuff.
Can, can I say something? I'm going to remember that you said that. The next time that you pull out orgies up there and fill a piece of paper out the window.
Go ahead.
Hey, that was not bothering him with plastic.
I don't know what you're talking about. Go ahead.
I was there, I was sitting there waiting for somebody to pull out a piece of paper.
I took it back out too. Didn't do that piece of plastic, call what?
I, I got nothing, nothing. And I really don't. I don't appreciate the fact that our old prime town, you know, that's just some more bull crap. But here's the point. If, if somebody parks trash on my land, right, that's a civil matter. But if he puts something in the dumpster, then the city go write a damn ticket and adopt for my land. What's, my land's more important than that dumpster. Now, I, that's the part I can't get through my head.
Thank you, Kenny.
And I'm being serious about that. I mean, I think that bothers me.
They, what they wanted, threw it in the middle of the street.
The city police done what they're supposed to do and what they're created to.
Well, let me tell you what happened. Let me tell you, Jim Hannes is here. You know that house I got there on, uh?
They want to count the things down.
You know what I mean? That double, I put that double out.
Crossing the old street.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, that guy, then that trailer come down there, parked the trailer there, filled with full trash on my land. I own that, it's everybody. I own where he parked the trailer. And the trash flowed down in my house, right? I went to everybody, didn't I, Jim? You had Jim Hannes, everybody. I went to the police and everybody, they said this is a civil matter for me to sue. That's my land. If I go up and whip that man's ass and go putting that stuff on there, it ain't a civil matter no more. You know what I'm saying? No, seriously. I'm being serious.
They told you it was a civil matter.
Huh?
They told you it was a civil matter.
I went to Sunny Oak and I called, I went to the, I went to the 3th Street home, I went to Jim Hannes, I went to everybody. The trash anybody would do is throw up like a trailer you pull on a car, right? I own the land where it was sitting too, wasn't my trailer. And then the possums, the damn cats, oh, everything up there get in it. You know what I'm saying?
I just called a towing company, tell them to tell it out of there. It's on your property. It's on your property.
Yeah, but here's the whole deal. Here's the whole deal. Here's the whole deal. I went to the police. If I go up there and build, start an argument, first thing you know, Nutter did that. Won't be Kenny Nutter did that. But here's the whole point. I know, but you're missing my point. The point is, if he puts trash on my land, it's a civil matter.
If he puts it on your property, he put that trailer on your property.
Right, and the trash flew out of, flew down my house. You know how he put the bags of trash, there were trash everywhere, wasn't there?
That's when old Brian was going to inspect it. He went to old Brian.
I went to everybody. But, but my point is, my.
Mr. Mayor, I will tell you, I have come in with time cards on Sunday and the dumpsters have been filled with mattresses, TVs, et cetera. Also swimming pool over on the other side, you dumped couches off. I mean, you know, if you're going to stop it, you need to put a lock bar on the dumpster if you're going to stop.
I would rather protect the property instead of the dumpster. I don't know, the dumpster, man got them to business. I'd rather protect the people's property. I mean, they're not what we're, we should be doing more of.
And even if you put a lock bar on the dumpster, they're just going to ride by in the middle of the night and throw the couches and stuff right at you.
That are sad, red or up above the house.
I mean, I said, what are you doing to someone like that? I mean, you don't want it in the back. I mean. I mean, we even, we even get trash bags out of the south end parking lot where we got trash cans on Saturday.
I've seen the city get a lot of trash bags. They wouldn't need to put it in everybody else's dumpster.
I've seen the city get a lot of trash bags. But, but what, but not, my question just comes down to this, Randy. Wouldn't it be better to protect people's property than a dumpster? My question. I mean, all this may have bought all this up, right? But I think the underlying problem should be that, don't you?
But, but here's your position. If, if you make this open fair game that, you know, the city says, well, we want to see everybody throw up the dumpster instead of throwing it over the bank, well, guess what? You better lock your dumpster and everybody else in town better lock theirs because you're going to need about three more to get your own trash in.
Well, isn't there a third alternative? I mean, isn't there something else you could do besides throw it over the bank or throw it in somebody else's dumpster?
Yeah, everybody pay for trash trucks.
No, the point I'm trying to make, the point I'm trying to make is, is, is the property less important than the dumpster. In other words, if I own land as an individual, is my land less important than that dumpster? Is my question.
But I, I don't think that that's a good question.
No, because the truth is matter, Kenny. Your land is your land. It ain't mine.
Your land is, but it's somebody else's.
No, I know. I paid for that house and I'm paying for it every year.
But I'm telling you, you're not listening.
Yes, I am. I am.
Kenny is dumping, bro.
My land's more important than that dumpster, I tell you that.
Those dumpsters belong to all of us. Everybody in here and everybody out there, those dumpsters are ours. Your land is your land. I don't own your land.
And not only are you supposed to protect it, I'm fantastic to have my land protected. My land's more important than that dumpster, I tell you that.
Well, it seemed like there was some confusion when you first began making a statement as to whether it was a civil. I mean, if I go chuck the trash bag in his front yard, is it a civil matter or is it a criminal matter?
Right, that's all I'm saying.
Well, I'm asking, it seems like there was some suspicion of whether that was actually true.
The response, the response from the, the police officer is that that is an intentional act, which makes it illegal dumping. So at that point, it's a criminal matter for illegal dumping.
Yeah, it was. If it was on the truck or something, calling down the truck.
If I go and I throw my household trash in Kenny Nutter's yard, that is criminal. If Herman Judy goes throws car parts in a city-owned dumpster that's owned and paid for by the city of Kaiser and the taxpayers, that is criminal.
But I had permission.
Who gave you permission to break the law?
I had permission, that's all I'm saying. I don't have, I don't have to answer to him.
Hey, you represent the public.
You better look in your own backyard, buddy.
What's in my backyard? You represent the public. Settle down, sir.
What's in my backyard? Settle down. You know what's in your backyard.
What's in my backyard?
What? You know what's in your backyard.
All right.
You know exactly what's in your backyard.
I'd like to make a motion.
You want a trailer in a backyard?
I would say anything about a trailer.
What's in my backyard then, Herman?
No, you know what's in your backyard. Stop running your mouth.
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to use the city, but the city.
Thank you.
There you go. Whoa, 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 whoa. Except city of.
Where about it? Where about it? It's not city of boys, dude.
You're wanting this to be city trash.
City unit trash.
We pick up trash every day downtown. And you go, enter the dumpster.
He's giving permission to paraphrase this motion. I'm going to paraphrase it as such, you tell me if you agree with this and then we'll continue. That city dumpsters will be used for city-created trash or trash that is created while using city-owned or operated facilities such as a park, that if you stop in a city park and eat your lunch in the city park, you have McDonald's bag, you ate your lunch out of, it goes in the city dumpster. If you rent a pavilion and have a reunion there, your trash goes there. It doesn't mean bring three bags of trash with you while you're having your family reunion and throw it all in the water, that's what you create.
Don't bring nothing from home.
That's right. Is that your, that's.
All right, tonight, I need to ask, I need to ask a question. The volunteers do the cleanup on these unkept properties.
That's, that's implemented by the city.
Okay.
Because if the volunteers weren't doing it, your crew would be doing it.
And nobody's getting charged with the trash that we pick up. We charge people and put a lien on a property when we pick trash. We charge people and put a lien on a property when we pick trash up. But a volunteer goes and does it, your volunteer groups and piles up a bunch of trash, and we go pick it up and throw it in the dumpster.
And what we can do is we've created... We've created a billing schedule for your department's services when... For what we charge for your manpower, trucks, mowers, chainsaws and stuff, have we not?
Well, we have that by it when it's been volunteers cutting the property.
So all we have to do is implement a charge on that schedule of the trash disposal fee. And then that would still be billed to the resident of whoever owns the property, the property owner. Even though that there's volunteers coming in, they can't get out there. For example, the property on East Piedmont Street.
Pulled ten loads of brush to the city dump, used city trucks, city vehicles, and wasn't charged a cent.
Volunteers did the work to tear it down. The city employees did the work to haul it away. So all we have to do is create an hourly rate for trucks. And, you know, if it's small amounts, I mean, you and Carissa could get together and work out a fee schedule for that and just implement it in the bag.
You don't worry me a bit, buddy.
And Herman. And then put that fee schedule together.
So we don't get into a conflict later on about that.
Jim, if you want to get with me, give me a copy of what we set up already for the local properties and then we can go.
If I speak out during this gathering, do I run the risk of being exploited upon by one of the councilmen? That's just third after a few members of this thing. I mean, should I be intimidated right now? Because I feel intimidated.
No, I'm here, I'll protect you.
I'm just curious if by speaking out and asking the question, am I running the risk of recurring the wrath of a councilman?
No, I'm here, I'm here.
I got pain here. Don't protect me.
Okay, so we got a motion on the floor. Is there any other questions on the floor?
All right, Jim.
One time, one time, what was that alley? I cleaned up an alley up on the hill for Jim one time. What's that alley? And I put that stuff in the dumpster, Jim told me that.
Where did the stuff come from? Whose property was it?
Just getting... Well, they just throwed it out again now. You know that alley there, between Wood Avenue, Newton Street?
Okay.
Right in there?
You volunteered.
No, I cleaned it up and Jim said if you clean...
You volunteered. Yeah.
You volunteered to clean up the alley.
Oh, okay. But I mean, I didn't want to get... I fed it up and that's what I did.
Okay, we got a motion on the floor. All in favor of the motion? All in favor? Say move.
Item 7F. Discussion for special meeting.
Can I talk? Is that okay?
Was your light on?
I wouldn't... No, it's not, actually. Anyway, about this special meeting, Mayor, the reason I brought it up is because I looked at the agenda items and I don't see where they merit. We talked about water this evening and it's a very light agenda. Would you please explain, are you going for two meetings a month? I've also heard that too.
You're just wealth of knowledge tonight, aren't you?
I think that's very sarcastic.
Well, you're entitled to your thoughts. I'm answering your question and I am as well.
Well, I don't know if I can talk now. I'm going to be bullied, continue to bully me.
Councilwoman Blanky, are you going to speak? I'm not bullying you, I'm answering your question.
You keep interrupting me. I was speaking.
I'm answering.
This is a very light agenda and it's about water and it's relative to Mr. Lessidge. Can I speak to Mr. Lessidge and ask, do you have a presentation ready for Tuesday?
I will be out of town.
Okay.
I received this this afternoon. I guess it came in an email, but I will be... I have four days of pre-arranged events and then I have a contractor up north.
Gotcha. Okay. I guess... Okay, I just wanted to see where we were with this. I thought we were going to vote on this. I thought you had said that possibly you would be bringing up special meetings.
Councilwoman, would you just please continue tonight and stop distracting the rest of council?
I'm not distracting.
And I'm not here to argue with you. Either continue your discussion or please stop speaking tonight.
And tell Mr. Hammel, I didn't say anything. All I'm saying is I thought we were going to vote on special meetings. It's simple.
That was never... That wasn't anything that we talked about. The reason, and I'll answer your question, that I called the special meeting is because of the water bills that were received, I got contacted by many, many residents that were concerned. I wanted those residents, whether they voted for you, 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 any of us at this table, to have a forum to get our full attention to come in so that they don't have to sit here for an entire evening to share their thoughts with what's going on with their water bill. Mr. Haberman is going to put a presentation together to, once again, inform our residents how we come to the cost that they receive each month. Relative to your question with regards to the Councilman's... Councilman Lessidge's March 10th motion to form an ad hoc committee based on a water rate, we wanted to... I wanted to bring that in as well because we're talking about water so that at this time he could share any research with the residents that are here and we could discuss forming that committee because it had been put on the back burner. Lastly, the topic that I wanted to discuss was something that the Councilwoman Shornak and I had discussed, which is helping man our building department because quite frankly, I've gotten complaints from people in this city that the city is starting to look shabby and in disrepair. The Councilwoman and I agreed, the residents do have a point. There are some areas of the city that do need a lot of TLC. And Randy has also voiced, who's not here tonight, has voiced his opinion to me that, Mr. Mayor, can we please get this on an agenda for council to discuss and consider so that I can get the people out there to start maintaining our city in the tradition and fashion that is there? That's the purpose for our special meeting.
Okay. Now, if you don't mind, I would like to tell you that, number one, as you said sarcastically, I have a wealth of information. We all kind of know the same stuff. I wasn't doing this. I've never been accused of being out of order. And that's really kind of a bully statement.
Councilwoman Blanky, stick to the agenda.
Sir, I have the right of speech.
Stick to the agenda. You are out of order to continue to engage in argumentative conversation.
Mayor, I mean, she's staying on the agenda item. She's talking about the special meeting.
Talking about bullying, Mr. Thompson, is not the agenda item.
And I would agree in...
It's a predication.
I would say both of you are probably crossing the line to a certain extent with regard to the forum and would caution both of you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I'm not sure, I'm going to go ladies first, Councilman Lessidge. Councilman Foster, go ahead.
Oh.
From violent acts and statements, James Butts, as a mayor, must feel an even higher level of invulnerability. In fact, at the June 12th, 2018 council meeting, Butts' overconfidence in his invulnerability got the best of him. After apparently getting angry after he was twice criticized in the meeting by a female resident, Diane Sembreno, Butts adjourned the meeting, shuffled some papers while faced forward and stated, quote, "Go choke yourself, Diane." Now, James Butts was not whispering when he made this threatening statement. So whether he said it trying to have Ms. Sembreno hear him, to intimidate her, or whether he just said it and didn't care if Ms. Sembreno heard him, risking that she would feel threatened, he was still making a threatening statement that was heard by others at a city council meeting about a female constituent who is literally half his size.
Any other public comment?
Council members, I don't know that most of the community was made aware that you had a meeting at nine thirty in the morning yesterday. That is not exactly given to the public adequate information about what you were going to do.
Ms. Sembreno has at times been critical of James Butts on many issues. Ms. Sembreno has made so many apparently valid criticisms in council meetings that James Butts commonly uses part of his time for closing comments at the end of the meetings just to try to rebut Ms. Sembreno's complaints and/or allegations.
And at the expense of this community is not appropriate. That's unfortunate that you have chosen to come here, apparently for a short period of time, get what you can and move on without considering how negatively your decisions drive you, in fact, the residents of this community who put their lives and their homes here.
James Butts is so irritated by Ms. Sembreno that he regularly abuses his powers, mayor, sometimes illegally, to pick on her or childishly annoy her while she's speaking to make it hard for her to finish her comments.
Any persons wishing to address the city council, assess their agency housing authority, any I have a face, that Jen may do so at this time. Here ain't no comment? No, I saw you look around, Ms. Sembreno, please.
Yes, I thought the lady was going to come up here and I wasn't going to interrupt her.
So Ms. Sembreno hesitated a moment to avoid interrupting another speaker. Let's see if Butts shows that courtesy to Ms. Sembreno or childishly interrupts it.
So... Does she get input as to what's on that billboard? No.
No.
Absolutely not. She never will. You don't need to respond to me. This is my time to speak. Absolutely. It is my time to speak. I have three minutes and I would appreciate that to be uninterrupted.
So now that we have some background on the mayor of Ms. Sembreno's history, let's see what actually happened at the June 12th Inglewood City Council.
Okay.
My name is Diane Sembreno and it's interesting to hear all that talk about caring so much about the community and yet one of the major meetings having to do with what's going to be running through our community is being held at Playa Vista. I don't know how we plan on including our community in that.
So at the June 12th meeting, during her first comments on agenda items, Ms. Sembreno raised concerns about the public's access to meetings, the fact that seniors had to pay for parking at the senior center when some city employees' salaries were significantly more than those in much bigger cities with many more residents. And during her public comments on non-agenda items, Ms. Sembreno talked about the city not giving proper notifications for community meetings and possible conflicts of interest city council members might have that would negatively affect Inglewood's residents. Now, it's obvious that Ms. Sembreno wasn't angry and her complaints weren't that vicious. However, James Butts is just an angry bully. And like I said, little Ms. Sembreno coming up week after week boldly criticizing James Butts and the four other men of the council just irritates him. So he regularly takes time during his closing comments to try to specifically rebut what Ms. Sembreno talks about. And this night, there was obviously something or a number of things that Ms. Sembreno talked in its entirety for weeks. But at some point, I went to the city's YouTube channel and this...
Oh, thank you, everybody. And with that word, jern.
Participating in this entire process does not give you the right to question or challenge the fact that I don't really have enough respect for you to actually share with you what my opinions and what my views are as to why I just voted no. Kathy actually thought, you know, she shared with you on that and that's fine. That's what she wanted to do. I don't have enough respect for you to actually do that because you have disrespected this process since day one and you're constant whining about not having this process or having this or doing that. And when you actually came at the time to do the one thing that you were actually obligated to do and the biggest responsibility you ever had, you just got up there and you swung and, man, you whipped harder than I've ever seen anybody in my entire life. You absolutely failed in your responsibility. So you know what? Don't come back to me and say, well, we want to know what you think, Eric, or you're not taking this seriously. I've taken this seriously since day one. And you know what? What my opinion is, is the why I vote is my issue. And if anybody wants to ask me, ask me. I have no problem with that. I don't owe you an explanation for anything. So why don't you guys man up once in a while, take a decision, make a vote, and just move on? I mean, I just... I find it absolutely incredible that we're all supposed to sit back here and hug and kiss each other and have some common opinion of it. We can actually have a dissenting thought. Someone can actually do something that's different around here. I don't personally care what you think. Do what you're going to do, make the decision, take a leadership role, take some responsibility, and just do it for once. You haven't done it 99% of other things I've seen you do in three and a half years around here. Why would you all of a sudden care now? All right? So I'm done. You can say what you want to say in rebuttal. You can go whine about all along about what Eric voted or what he didn't vote, but I have some fundamental problems with how this contract was negotiated. I have some fundamental problems, not not checked by anybody, but you did a great job. But how the package was paid for, how much money is being spent on this, how much money was spent on a lot of other things? I don't like it. I simply don't like it. And you know what? If I see a background investigation that comes back and says this is an acceptable thing and this is good, you know what? Maybe I'll vote for it. But you know what? That's my business and some of yours. So vote for yourself. What you actually did, I would be impressed. It's a guy next to you who couldn't do that. Vote for yourself and you move on. It's really pretty busy. All right? I'm done. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Jelly. I believe Mr. Neku was next.
I would yield to Mr. Rosbach.
Okay. Ms... Mr. Rosbach, you think to go next?
So that wasn't so hard, was it, Eric? Once you get it flowing, you really get your feelings out there. There's so much wrong with what you said, but I won't linger on that. I do appreciate the fact that you actually told us what you thought instead of just clamming up and pretending like delivering a world. And so it would be beneath us all to respond to any of that.